So everybody can hear, I'm gonna go ahead and get this town hall started. So first of all, I appreciate you coming today. We do have a lot to answer to you. So I see some fresh faces here. So I'm gonna go ahead and just tell you how this is going to work. And then as people come in, I do have a few people just to introduce. But I'll start it off with saying, thanks for coming today. We have some detailed information that we've been prepping for, because I know a lot of you have answers. And here's the reality of this town hall. We owe you some answers to some of your questions. So I'm gonna go ahead and just start off just by introducing myself real quick. And just, I need five minutes just to tell you how we got here, to give context of why we're having a town hall. I think that's fair. So even if you've heard this before, I'm gonna summarize this whole thing and give me maybe five to 10 minutes. So we do have people who, I mean, generally speaking, we have Chief Hussey from Fire District Three and our chief who's here. We have board members here. We have staff from Fire District Three. We have a lot of people here. And when they get up on the mic, I think we have Fire District Three board member here. I saw, so I want to thank, I want to thank everybody for coming. But I'll let them just introduce themselves. But I'm gonna start it off with just a real quick summary of how we got here and a little bit about the context of why we're here. So my name is Greg Costanzo. I grew up in the Rogue Valley. I love Southern Oregon, okay? I went to North Medford High School. I went to college. I served my country in the military. And then I decided to raise my family when I came back to Southern Oregon. I have a deep love for Southern Oregon and public safety, okay? I was in the Army as a lieutenant. I decided to serve as a police officer and a bomb technician and a K-9 officer. And I came back in 2001 to raise my family here. It was, it's a deep passion for me because the people who work in public safety, I think, are amazing people. So I retired. I have friends in the Fire District. I have friends from all over Southern Oregon. I was a really happy retiree for about, about seven months. And somebody came to me and they came in my office and they started just telling me a little bit about what they thought was happening in Fire District Five. And I shut the door in my office and they told me what was happening. And there were some tears from the person telling me. And he said, I need help because some things are happening that the public has no idea about. So I gave him some guidance. And one thing led to another. Months went by and I realized, oh, man, this is gonna be a big deal. And that happened when the Board of Directors, I'm sure you know, all three of them decided to quit. They walked out. And I was approached by somebody and they said, you should put your name into the hat to be appointed to try to fix what's going on. So of course, the nature of a good public servant, what do you think I did? I said, oh, it won't be that bad. So I raised my hand and I immersed myself into what was happening at Fire District Five. And I'll tell you right now, the people who stepped up, is Chris Luz here? He was appointed with me. I don't know if we have any other board members here. But I will tell you this, we came together as a team from all different backgrounds. And we put our nose to the grinding stone about what is happening down here at the district. When I say that, I mean like 20, 30 hours a week, okay? And we met off duty. We met for coffee. We started working really close about what's going on. So you can imagine me, I had no idea about public meetings laws. I had no idea about all these different rules because the one thing I believe in is transparency, always. I believe in honesty. I believe in teamwork. And I did, was raised by a truck driver, okay? And when I went into public service, he told me a couple of things. Because one thing he said is, you don't work for the Oregon State Police. You don't work for, you work for the taxpayers of who's paying your salary. And I will never forget that. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I believe that for all of you. We work for you. And I'm gonna be open and honest about what we found. So we started opening the books and we realized really quick that we were in a lot of trouble financially. And the last thing I'll say before I introduce Mike Hussey is, raise your hand if you were either affected or worked the Almeida Fire. Raise your hand, anybody? I was there that day as a trooper. I gotta be a fireman for about 24 hours. It's kind of fun, but scary. I went home after a 24-hour shift and my wife actually said to me, what was happening there? And I, I cried a little bit and I said, I think there's, I think there's 100 people dead. I thought the, I thought people really were in trouble. Because I was there that day. What I saw the next day, we did lose people, okay? But I saw people in this room. Fire, raise your hand if you're a firefighter here or used to be a firefighter. Yeah, I saw hundreds of people be saved that day. I was shocked when I went back to the command center and we realized, man, we were saving lives. And then when I heard this, I'm thinking, man, a community that doesn't have public safety, firefighter and police is not better off than if they have a robust fire department. So when somebody says sometimes, because I get emotional, okay? I'm Italian, I get emotional, I get mad, I get emotional. Sometimes people say, Ned, you are emotional about this Fire District Five thing. I say, yes. Because here's the deal, this is people's lives, property. And here's the other thing, people pay a lot of tax money to have public safety services. So whenever somebody says I get emotional, I do get emotional, okay? So that being said, in one year, we've been working on this for a year. Mike Hussey and his team, can you raise your hand if you're from Fire District Three? Okay? Give them a round of applause. So when we started this idea of, first of all, and he'll cover this in a little bit, we don't have money, we don't have money to stay open. I thought the Fire District Five was gonna disband, close down. And a lot of people have theories about what happens. But I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of theories about all these things, but nobody has the implementation. We asked Medford Fire, Ashland Fire, Fire District Three, and something called SDAO, which is Special Districts of Oregon, for help. Everybody did step up to the table. Based on the totality of circumstances, there were people in this county who said, there's no way in hell anybody's gonna step up and help you because it doesn't make sense financially and nobody's gonna wanna do that. And I'm just gonna tell you right here, this chief and his team stepped up and said, we are gonna get you through this time. Without them, this would be bad, okay? A year from where we are now, I'm so glad that we are even here to talk to you about some of the things that we're gonna talk about. Okay, because I didn't think it was possible. So when we entered this agreement with chief and his team, it was like a big deal, okay? So here's how it's gonna work. I'm gonna give the mic to the chief. He's gonna introduce himself and his team. I'm gonna, I do have a list of questions that I'm gonna go through. And they're very robust, okay? It has everything to do with criminal investigations, budget, Fire District Five staffing. And based on the question, it's either gonna be a chief question or a meat question, we'll answer those. If anybody wants to ask a question, okay? I am gonna, we have pieces of paper, I think, that you can write it down and turn it in to us. Or I'm gonna ask you, if you will raise your hand, I will answer those questions. But I know in a public format, sometimes people don't feel comfortable asking certain questions. We have a long list that were submitted to the district on our website. We can go through a lot of those. I think some of those will be, some of those will cover your questions. So I'll read the question. I will turn it over to chief after he introduces his team. So that's how it's gonna kind of work. If you have to leave, I am gonna ask, we keep this somewhat timely, okay? I told my wife, I probably will be home for dinner, but I hope I'm home before dinner. I'd like to keep it to two hours, okay? But I will be here to answer any of your questions because this is where you're gonna get the truth about the questions you have. Okay, one thing I always promised and our board has promised is we're gonna give you transparency, even if you don't like it. So if I'm honest with you and you don't like it, can I just ask you? That's because sometimes the truth hurts a little bit. I'm gonna be honest with you, okay? Sometimes you can't get mad when somebody's honest with you because you're gonna hear information and what you're gonna say today is, how did that happen? I'm more worried about how do we move forward. So when emotions get high, let's just work together. So I'm gonna turn this over to the chief and he will introduce his team.
Well, thank you. And good morning. Really appreciate the turnout today. What it demonstrates is that we have a mutual footing. We both are concerned about this community and the services of this district. Like to introduce my team first, I have Director Bill Levens. One of the Board of Directors is here to join you. We have Margie Calvert, Executive Assistant. Will Cleland, Deputy Chief, right hand. Standing next to him is Division Chief Ryan Dickerson. We have Division Chief Aaron Busted as well. And our data systems, the one that is working diligently behind the scenes with social media, the redesign of your website, the annual report that we'll touch on, everything that is public facing and helping communicate, that's Shannon over here in the corner. We are, we are videoing this. It's not streaming live, but we wanna be able to post it up on the website so others who couldn't make it today can come back and watch it. So these little green glow things are our mics that we're using for the device over here. As mentioned, I'm Mike Hussey. It's my privilege to serve as your fire chief. I'm also the fire chief of Fire District Three. We serve 171 square miles to the north end of the county. We have Gold Hill, Eagle Point, Central Point, White City, and the rural fringe around. We serve from eight stations there. We have experience with special districts. We are a special district and we have a budget that's a little bit larger and a service area a little bit larger. But the community-mindedness, our approach to providing value for the community, the approach to ensure that the community receives their dollars' worth, transcends down into this district as well. Working on my 34th year in the fire service, I started with ODF. It truly is an honor and I think when you get a chance to speak to the others, they love what they do and it's a blessing. But I grew up here and this community means a whole lot. And I bet many of you, if you went through the Ashland school system, my last name might be familiar. My grandparents were teachers at the high school and the middle school. And so to be able to serve down here on this end is truly an honor right now. You want me to jump into some of the finances?
Sure.
All right. So the big question is, how did we get here? And I'd ask, I'm gonna use a few terms. Raise your hand if it's not making sense. Not gonna try and use some acronyms. But the simplest of numbers, July 1, 2022. We started the year with $3,752,000. July 1, 2023, we started the year $1,200,000. July 1, this last July, we started with $284,516 in the bank. About 400 of that was borrowed. So we finished the end of last fiscal year. We run on a July 1 to June 30th. And you're gonna hear me say "we" because I'm your fire chief. I didn't build this budget. I inherited it, but I own it now. So we started the year with $284,000, $284,000 of borrowed funds. Why? 2023, '24, the fiscal year, every year in October, the Tax Assessor's Office gives us a form. We know how much our district is worth. We know if everybody paid 100% of their taxes, how much we should receive. But most of us take advantage of the 3% discount and there's some taxes we just don't receive. This community is very fortunate to have a 95% collected rate, meaning 95% of what is assessed is received. In the 23, '24 budget, it reflected tax revenue of $7,34832. When we go back and we pull the Tax Assessor's records, we should not have expected any more than 600, or $6,380,832. We built the budget thinking we had $653,000 more dollars in tax revenue. '24, '25, it continued forward, $7,491,825 is what the tax revenue in the budget depicts. Going by the Tax Assessor's numbers, 6842166. Yes, Meredith?
Why are those numbers different? Both of you are so similar.
I don't know where the previous administration got the numbers.
Okay, they're not your numbers.
They're not my numbers.
Okay.
So this is, again, we inherited the budget. If we open the budget, tax revenue was this for '23, '24. Tax revenue for '24, '25 was that. When we go back and look at what this Tax Assessor's Office certified, it should have been this, it should have been this. The difference in year one, the difference in year two. With the two-year budget that was implemented, the difference was $1,303,000. Meaning, we claimed we were going to receive $1.3 million more than we really should have anticipated. But the budget was built on that. And if you remember my first page, we were actually sliding backwards by about 1.5 million. There's also something that I cannot explain. We were overestimating the cash that we were gonna carry forward. And I don't have it written up here, but the same trend here was in the carryover. And so the numbers I put up here came from one of the preparation for audits and I'll speak to that in a minute. But very simple, as we build a budget, and this is what we're doing in-house down at Fire District Three, we're looking at our balanced budget, how much have we spent to date? And I'm gonna call it the burn rate because we each have a budget that we know we spend so much out of each month. And so we're projecting, what is our burn rate as we move out? And then deduct that from the cash I have on hand. And we're gonna see a little bit of a tax payment coming in March. For those who pay three tax payments annually, we'll see about $400,000 more coming. And so we factor that in. And we try and build our best estimation to the Budget Committee. And then as we come into June, and we take a red pen and we start parsing things out. We want to get that number that we end the fiscal year with as close as possible. We don't want to guess we're gonna have more money and we don't wanna undershoot it by too much either. I wanna be able to put that back into the service delivery the next year. So we know we're sliding backwards. We started July 1 on borrowed money. We thought we were gonna have $649,000 more than we did. That borrowed money came from a tax anticipation note. What a tax anticipation note is, and it's not too uncommon for special districts or municipalities, our fiscal year starts July 1. We receive tax funding in November. And unless we save accordingly to get from July 1 to November, we need a little bit of help. And so a tax anticipation note is a good faith obligation. It's almost like a payday loan. I agree to pay this back when I get paid. Our tax anticipation note has not been paid. We're sitting on it right now. But the debt on it is $2,913,000. That's what we owe a local lender right now. Our total debt is $3,019,461. Another thing that's not too uncommon, fire engines cost a lot of money. And unless we save accordingly and pay cash, we end up borrowing a little bit of money to pay for the fire engine. And we have three apparatus right now that have notes on them. We also have a note on the talent station. We have a note on some other miscellaneous, some of the breathing packs and some technology. Our total debt owed to other people right now is $6,132,000. A lot of this is already termed out, meaning it's a structured loan. We have seven structured loans and they march out up to 10 years. But we have $3,019,000 due by the end of June. Today, we have $3,450,000 in the bank. So the board's got some work ahead of them. They gotta decide what we're gonna do. How do we bridge to June? Now, it sounds really bad and I'm not saying it's good, but we're not sliding backwards anymore. So we've stopped the hemorrhage, if you will. And just like any, our body does it, when we go into shock, a loss of volume, everything shrinks back to the core and that's how we stabilize. And that's what we're looking to do with some of the operations. We're currently, we're actively trying to reconfigure the debt. We have some notes that are over 8%, you know, when you borrow $500,000 on 8%, when you borrow $2.9 million on 8%, we're paying about $22,000 a month in interest. And so we're working feverishly to reconfigure these notes and buy down not just rates, but we're gonna have to build longer term into some of this debt repayment. So before I get to the next one, talk a little bit about the audits. As a special government, we're required to conduct an audit. This organization has not had an audit since '21. 2021, fiscal year ending 2021 is one that we've been working, all of us collectively, for well over a year on. Richard Brewster's office stepped up and made the organization audit-ready. He didn't conduct the audit, but they stepped in and really helped staff understand invoices and some of the budgeting that had taken place and helped compile all the necessary documents to provide to an auditor. And so Paulie Rogers is the company that has been hired to conduct the audit. They were going through conducting the audit and the field auditor assigned to us resigned. And so just this last week, we got a new field auditor assigned to us. We're continuing to do the '21, '22 audit. We intend to have that by June. Once that's done, we're gonna start '22, '23 audit, '23, '24 audit. And then we'll be ready for this '24, '25 audit. So there's quite a bit of audits that are still coming. Again, what those audits are intended to do is determine whether or not the Fire District, one, followed public budgeting law. I'm here to tell you, we didn't. Two, did the expenditures and revenue align with the books provided? They're not gonna go in and say whether or not the expenditures were appropriate. They're not going to provide opinion on the types of purchases. Their sole purpose is to make sure we followed law and that revenue and expenditures match the books, that money didn't come in or go out inappropriately. So as we look forward, knowing what money we have, this is the anticipated tax revenue. This is what the assessor, if we take the assessor's certified number from November, apply about a 5% growth rate to this district, we anticipate we will have $7,335,000 to build a budget from. Our revenue at 100% is higher. This is more like 7.7 million. But again, we're only building 95%. Our debt and obligations, the total we owe everyone else right now, subtracted from there, leaves us with $6,265,000. So this is a lease payment. This is tax anticipation note. This is professional contractual services. When we have audits done, we have to pay for them and they're not too cheap. We're gonna have legal expenses. And so all of those other items bring, account for $1.1 million. We're gonna have $6,265,000 to spend on services. I'm targeting our service level for '24. To get there, I need at least $5.4 million assigned to, it's called personnel services, but simply, that's our people. My materials and services, that's our stuff. That's our fuel. That's our maintenance and repair for both facilities and for apparatus, our hose, our contracts. We pay for your 911 services. And that's about $300,000 for the 911 service. So you call, they dispatch us, and we pay for it. So this is the rough breakout. This is gonna be really lean. We have cut way back and we're at about $700,000 for the stuff to provide service right now. Let that soak in just a little bit. Our goal at Fire District Three is we try and maintain 80/20, meaning 80% people, 20% stuff for materials and services. What this does not depict is savings for the future. It doesn't depict contingency, the rainy day fund. Right now, we don't have a contingency. We don't have the savings account. We don't have the savings account for the future and that's what we're gonna strive to build to. The model, and it's gonna take many budget cycles, many years, is we're gonna shift, if all things were copacetic, we would move our budget year from July 1 to November 1. Because what we wanna be able to do is have enough money to go into November. We call it the lean years or the lean months. And so we have an ending fund balance. And if we budget accordingly, we're just November 1 to November 1. We're using our own money, not borrowing someone else's money in that dry period. And then we gotta have some contingency, some of that what-if money. And we have to be start, we have to start saving for the future apparatus. That fire engine right there will have a service life of about 20 years. When we go to replace it, it's probably half a million dollars inflationary factors. A fire engine today costs a million dollars. So we need to save accordingly. We can't this year, but you'll see us starting to put some aside. Even if it's $1,000 that we can put in an account, we've at least got the line item and we're gonna build it forward. I'll pause there for any questions. Yeah, right up front. Also, I do have a pocketful of pens and cards. If anybody would like one to write down a question, I'll give them to staff over here. I would like to take a minute and introduce Brady Graham. He's the president of Local 2596. I tell you, we're, yeah. We talk frequently, almost daily. And we're in lockstep right now on how to get this organization back. And not just back, but better than it was before. And you know, no fire chief likes to let people go. No fire chief wants to have less people. And we're gonna continue to work together to build forward. I think there's, I'll start right over here.
I just wonder, are the blue numbers, are those estimates? Or for fiscal year, are those estimates?
Those are estimates for next fiscal year, July 1. And yeah, it's rounded out because we build our budget And yeah, it's rounded out because we build our budget and the budget committee will meet in May. If I don't get my estimates on health insurance, workers' comp insurance, and all these other ones, until April. Yeah, I'll start up front and work back. Go ahead.
You mentioned the audits are ongoing.
Yeah.
But the main question is, when the audits are done, is the money or those audits going to be made public?
Yes. Yeah, all audits will be released at a board meeting and they are public.
The third question that is, I see you've got what came into tax revenue, but what about all this grant money that flowed in, which was $10 million, I understand? Where is all that in the budget?
So you know, I think we have to contextualize grant money. It's one time. It's like opening your birthday card and your grandparents gave you a nice chunk of money. But you shouldn't budget on it, right? Not going to go buy anything. So all of the revenue is depicted in previous budgets. And this is on that one, this sheet, this is likely where that was. We know that there's an apprentice program, the district received $2 million. I'm not going to cast judgment on it. If the state gave us $2 million, that would make up this difference. But I'm going to let Paulie Rogers determine the grants. Go ahead, sir.
Related question. One, you said that there's quite a bit of loan for borrowing money there.
Yeah.
What's the term on the current one?
Well, I think we have, we have one that stops this year. We'll make a final payment all the way up to 2033. Oh, yeah. So his question was, what are the term rates or the terms of the various loans that we have?
The second question is, what are you hoping to get as a new rate?
Yeah, so the question was, what are we hoping to get for a new term and rate? First thing we need to do is identify what we have for the equity. What's our collateral? Second one is, understand we're a little bit of a risk. We don't have any audits. The district doesn't have a credit score, but we have to demonstrate that we have audits that we've cleared and we don't have any right now. So yeah, yeah, we will get them. So we're looking for a 10 to 20 year, and that's part of the consideration. I will tell you, our tax anticipation notes with People's Bank, and they've been really good and patient. They're obliging with our situation.
What budget, what district does that budget apply to?
Yeah, so the question is, what district does that apply to? That's Fire District 5. That is your Fire District's budget.
And is that this fire station or is there more?
So Fire District 5 has three fire stations. So the question was, is that for this fire station or for all of them? This budget is for the entire district's operation, all three stations.
Where are the other two stations?
Where are the other two stations? We have one in Talent and one in Phoenix.
And how does District 3, as you're in force?
Yeah.
How are they interacting with?
So back in October, going back to July, we began just helping because our structures are similar. Meaning, we're both special districts. We're not a municipality. So we're giving them some guidance. In October, our Board of Directors and the Board of Directors of Fire District 5, both Board of Directors entered into an intergovernmental agreement that assigns me and my executive staff to serve as the executive staff at Fire District 5. Go ahead. So for, good question. Where are the revenue sources largely? We're tax dependent. We do have some grant opportunities. There is an ability to bill for services, and that's something that we need to explore. A large part of our call volume is Interstate 5 going right through. So that's what a dispatch sounds like. That's our engine down in Phoenix getting toned out to medical emergency. So we do not bill for services if you are a resident or if you're a community member visiting a resident or conducting work within the district. But we do have an ability to bill motor carriers, and that's something that we need to strongly consider and stand up. I'm going to, I'll go here, yep, in purple.
In reference to the fiscal year, is it even possible to change the date or is that?
Can we change the date of the fiscal year? No, public budgeting law.
I didn't think so, but you know something else?
We're trying to discover everything magical right now. Yes, sir.
Last time we had a meeting here, you have a $1.25 million bill. $3 million over, or over cost. New fire patient in Talent?
So in Phoenix. So the question references the construction of the Public Safety Center in Phoenix, where we have a portion of the building for the engine company. The, in middle of April, we're going to meet and review. That project hasn't closed yet. The Fire District hasn't made a payment. We won't be making a payment for the lease until October or November, but we still haven't established or settled on what the final project cost was and the amortization across agencies. I'll come back to you. Yeah. No, so what he's asking is, in that one sheet, I depicted we had $6.1 million of debt owed to everyone else. I just put a placeholder of $1 million in there. So it is calculated into that 6.1. So minus the Phoenix Public Safety Center, it's 5.1 to everyone else. And again, 2.9 of it is tax anticipation note. Yes, sir.
Good question to mind. First of all, is the Fire District taxiderm receiving the amount of money from the county that's protected under the tax rules?
Yeah, so the question, is the district receiving the amount as certified by the tax rules? Yes, we get a monthly turnover report. And it's kind of amusing. You can find these on the assessor's site if you wanted. But it will show the amount of the turnover for '23-'24. And then it goes all the way down. We're still receiving back taxes for 2002. And we get like $2 a month from 2002. And then it graduates up, maybe, you know, 2008, we're getting $15,000. And so their office does a really good job, and that is built in. We call them prior year taxes. It is built into the number. We can anticipate, we're going to get about $3,000 of prior year taxes. Yeah, correct. Yep.
Do I have a five and I need to call? Could we respond first? Is it from a talent or is it a customer?
Yeah, and if we could just shove that one, so we'll get into some response here in a few minutes.
Staffing.
Yes, sir.
Moving forward, what changes have been made in the regulatory process?
Some of the things that we're implementing, the financial review that we presented at this past board meeting on Tuesday night is much more comprehensive. And please understand, I know you guys are willing to provide patience, but we had to create a little bit of translation. When you go through a budget that somebody else develops, two years, and you know, the numbers didn't quite match, but even some of the terms didn't match. And so what our new budget will do is break out in layman terms where the money's going. Fuel and just marching through. We're going to implement some financial policies that don't exist right now. We're going to ask the board to consider, what is the minimum amount that we're going to put into savings? What is the minimum amount that we're going to use for contingency? The, and there's a lot of checks and balances and oversight. When you look at our organization, there's multiple steps for any appropriations or any expenditures. Board level, I have a spending limit, but just because I have a spending limit doesn't mean that somebody else doesn't know we're spending that. And I'll guarantee you that our Chief Finance Officer, Stacy Maxwell, very little slides faster. Yes, sir.
So I know what you're going to talk about, the spot's mine shortly.
Yeah.
I'll wait for that, but what I am concerned about, do you have any idea when this station may be built? And the reason why I asked that, what would be the events that happened in California?
Yeah.
State of California has just agreed to let state farm increase 22% for us.
Yep, yep.
So if you're looking at your budget, I'll go with that.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely. And I will, I will get to that. Yeah, yeah. We'll make sure we cover finances real quick. Bill?
Can you give us a history of what things looked like five, four, seven, eight years ago? How many battalion chiefs we had? How many half-hundreds? How many engineers? How many firefighters? What are tax patients?
I would have loved to have had that question beforehand because I don't have the history. I didn't serve in this organization.
It was very different.
It was very, it was smaller.
And what happened is, and I hate to say it, we all have to remember. Because nobody ever thinks of the grand old board. But if you need to use a same place and nobody can see a question? Think about these goofy numbers? Nobody asks anything. So the power to change things in the future elects from right to left. Show up at the meeting, be curious.
Bill, can I just ask you?
Yep.
Let's wait for a little bit. Let's get through this program and then you can have your discussion about what happened eight years ago. Is that fair?
I'm not, I, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you. So we will cover some of that, and what I want to do is just stay on topic because we have many people here that have submitted questions online. We're going to get to staffing next. I'm going to go ahead and cover some things. So this is budget. I'm just going to give you a little bit like what the board, so remember, a year ago, the board sat down and we were inundated. One thing that I will recognize is, I had a huge learning curve. What I've learned over the year is boards have a huge impact on contracts, that when they make a decision, you can't just undo it because you didn't like the contract because legally they're signed. I realized that the combination chief, fire chief, has a huge impact, okay? Some of the reasons why we're where we are is because the checks and balances for Fire District 5 were stripped away by the old fire chief to include audits, financial, people, and CPAs. So the importance of having a board is not only critical now, but it also isn't critical because of the contracts that you sign into that have ramifications for years. So I'm going to cover a few of the things that people ask, and these have to do with contracts. There are some legal things that I'm going to talk about. When the board was appointed by the county commissioners, and I only have one board member here, so I'm speaking for myself, and I'm just a little bit more maybe upfront with people than maybe a politician. We were faced with what I thought were criminal complaints. There were sexual harassment complaints that were like real. There was financial complaints. And remember my background, 25 years in law enforcement. What do you think a police officer thinks when all of a sudden they start hearing things that you think? I think those are criminal because I've taken people to jail for some of this stuff for 25 years. That's what me and the board were, were faced with. So if you look back, we got complaints. Now remember, I represent you all. We got complaints that in my world are criminal. We had to hire investigators. Guess what that cost? Your money had to pay for investigators to do investigations. So we didn't put employees at risk and the public. So if you remember, we were forced to put the chief, Charles Handley, we had to put him on admin leave. We worked through that process. We, we had a lawyer. We had a lot of different things come up. We had investigators that we paid for who had a background in personnel investigations and criminal. They gave us findings of fact that substantiated many of the complaints that we got as a board. Okay, some of those rose to the level of criminal complaints. Everybody know who Nate Sikler is, just for the record? He's our sheriff. And Beth Heckard was the district attorney. So me, as the board chair, and another board member took our sustained allegation complaints, and we had to turn them over to the Jackson County Sheriff's Office. That was forwarded to the district attorney. And one of the questions is, what's the status of those investigations? They are pending with the district attorney at Jackson County, who's Patrick Green. So everybody knows, the real easy answer for me to say is, I can't talk about it because it's criminal. What I'm going to tell you is, there were things that rose to the level of criminality, okay? I turned in a complaint as for you all, had, that had to do with money. It had to do with property, and it had to do with a whole lineage of things. I think there were seven of them. And that is actually pending right now at the district attorney's office. Is that, I can't really go into, yes, sir?
Is any of that contingent upon a forensic audit?
That's a great question. So sometimes, remember when the chief talked about terminology? I'll get to you in a minute, sir. So terminology matters. So technically, we can't do a forensic audit, okay? I did them when I was a state trooper. Law enforcement agencies do forensic audits. We do audits through Paulie Rogers. We can do investigations, but we cannot commission or do a forensic audit because a true forensic audit could take search warrants. It could take opening up files that are closed through a judge's order. My, my hope would be that would be done by somebody, either the sheriff's office, the district attorney, or the Department of Justice. But keep in mind, I'm a civilian now. So a forensic audit is a law enforcement function, not a district function. And the other thing that we've been wrestling with is every dollar that we spend to do some of this stuff, what do you think it does to our operations? Like you said, what do you think it does to having firefighters work in stations? It takes money from you. So I think we've been very responsible. We have had many investigations. We've been very diligent with your money. We have many sustained allegations, which did, that was why we made decisions to fire the fire chief. Okay, so did that answer your question?
Do a follow-up.
Yes, sir.
Criminal investigation, if there were, via conviction, or any potential for a specific clawback?
So that would be, that would be restitution. And in my career, I have seen that from A to Z, that, but restitution always is part of the criminal justice system. But that is made at way higher levels than this guy. So is that fair? So, yes, sir?
Thank you for all your sharing. And for me, I would like to know if it's pending.
Yeah, so here's
Is it an active investigation? See in some inbox somewhere? What is actually happening with the investigation?
Yeah, that's a great question. So here's what, in my world, what pending means. So, and everybody, and I don't want to give a civics lesson, but I've had to have one when it comes to special districts. I didn't even know what they really meant. I thought a city fire department was the same as a special district. Here's what you all do. You hire or you elect sheriff, then you elect a district attorney. You elect a board of commissioners, and what we are forced to do is we turn it over to Nate Sikler, who's your elected sheriff. He turns it over to Patrick Green. It's at Patrick Green's office. When I say pending, he has it.
So we don't know?
I don't know. No, because
And we can't call?
You can call him as any, as you would call me as an elected. Remember what I told you at the beginning? Who does any elected person work for? You. Yeah, I, I'm running for a position coming up. My phone's always on. You, you call me. I will always answer my phone. I did turn it off for about three weeks. Right, Ty? I turned, I went on a trip. I was the only person who didn't purchase the international calling plan for a reason. Because for three and a half weeks, I didn't, my phone didn't even work. And I was thinking, this is awesome. I just, you know, so Ty, now I just, you know, so Ty, now you know why I didn't have that plan. So, um, you should call him. Just like, you know what, Nate Sikler is open. Patrick Green is a good district attorney, but legally, he doesn't tell me things because he can't. Because legally, he doesn't funnel information back to me because that would be inappropriate. I don't know what, what, what's going on. I know this, we were diligent with your money. We followed the protocol. We hired investigations through a vetting process. Our board of directors, to include Chris, voted on who we hired. And when criminal allegations rose, we stopped that investigation, froze all of our records and turned it over to criminal, um, people who we elect and that's the sheriff's office. And they are really good. Our sheriff's department here in this county is really good. So did that answer your question? Okay. Um, I'll get into contracts and then we'll get into staffing because here's the truth. The staffing is what we're really want to know. Like I want, really wanna know the chief coming up staffing. But I'll cover a couple more that people turned in. One of them is, are we getting sued? Yes. When you do what we've done as a board, guess what? There, there are, somebody told me a long time, leadership has consequences, okay? Our board got appointed, me, um, and we made decisions. Do you think lawsuits came with my name on them? Yes. Yeah, that happens. You know, my twenty-five years in law enforcement, you think you get sued sometimes for doing the right thing? Yes. We do have lawsuits pending. I think I've been named in a lawsuit. Um, Brady's named in a lawsuit. The chief hasn't been named yet, but he will be named probably in a lawsuit. Um, I'm not sure if deputy chief has been named in a lawsuit. We have active lawsuits against us. Okay? We have insurance that we pay for, you all pay for, to cover our actions if they're appropriate. I think we did appropriate things by terminating people. We also have contracts that were entered into by a previous regime that are legal contracts that we are trying to renegotiate. Chief mentioned one of them. One of them's the public safety building. There's other ones for, um, entities that entered into contracts after Almeda. We're going through those right now to try to figure that out, how to do that through lawyers. So you don't get stuck with a bad, um, contract. And some of those are pending right now and we talk about those a lot. We can't talk about them in the public, but we have something called executive session that we've spent hours talking about legal things to safeguard you all from this budget going away, which means that it impacts your budget. Which when we get into staffing, that's gonna impact how many firefighters you have on a daily basis. So long, long answer is, we have legal things that are happening every day. We talk a lot about how to minimize the effect to chief's budget on some of the things that we were, that we inherited. So I covered a lot. Um, let me do one more before I turn it over to the chief to do staffing. Um, legal was pretty good. Um, um. Did I miss anything that, that you saw?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the chief to get into what I think is why many of you are here and that has to do with your staffing, your insurance and the impact that, that you all have out at Station Four. Yes, sir?
And mostly, I know we've got a lot of people that have, uh, the public safety building.
Yes.
The way I understand it is our funds, District Five, went into building that, but we don't have any ownership of that.
Yeah, that's it. I'll do, I'll, I'll talk just overview. Phoenix burnt down, their fire station burnt down. We put in for grants, okay? Grants were awarded, I think into, I don't know, roughly ten million, nine million dollars. People decided, hey, let's build a thirteen million dollar firehouse and let's, um, instead of using the nine million dollars. Um, okay? And just for the record, I'm, I'm a penny pincher. I do not like spending a lot of money, so that was a red alarm for me. But legally and contractually, the city of Phoenix owns the building. There was an agreement or a contract to take out a loan, part of our debt, to pay for that structure. I think it was three million dollars right around, okay? We don't own that building, we have to lease it. And there's many ways to negotiate a good lease. And we don't, I don't think we make a payment until January of twenty-six.
Correct.
But we have pushed that off and like the chief said, we are gonna work on getting a better deal for you when that comes through. But all of that was kinda baked in the cake when we all as a board sat down and it is a concern. Yes?
This chairman, I found attorney, um, this attorney's phone number, I'm gonna give it out.
Oh, well, well, thank you, Chris. So if you want the district attorney's phone number, we will give it out. But just for the record on the video, it's not me giving it out. Director Chris Luz.
Five four one, seven seven four, eight one eight one. You can Google attorney's phone number. Five four one, seven seven four, eight one eight one.
And then I'm gonna turn it over to the chief to cover, um, operations, okay? And then the operations is, is the important thing. So legally and the board, or me, does anybody have any questions about where we are with all that things? Yes, ma'am?
If the special districts have similar issues that are happening in this department?
Well, I will tell you, every agency has issues. Every agency uses investigators. Every agency has issues like a family, okay? I would say this, we are getting through some. We are trailblazing things that our people are watching and maybe learning. But we are doing things that maybe have never been seen before. For me, whenever somebody who knows a lot, and I don't know a lot, says, good luck, we've never seen this before, I think to myself, well, that scares me a little bit. But every agency has issues. And here's, as I pass it over to Mike for staffing, what I want to impart though, you see this team over here? I will tell you, and the chief, I've never met anybody better as a team to get us through them. So, all right, chief, here you go.
All right. And I'll tell you, yes, there's two other fire districts within the state that are experiencing similar, uh, child financial insecurity. I'm gonna write another number up here. And this is, uh, we knew what our budget was, right? That's what they had built on. When we went into the two-year budget, uh, cycle starting in twenty-three or in twenty-two, that was our personnel services. And so you can see, we were gonna have about this much in revenue and we were projecting spending that much on people. And so we had built a staffing model that was, uh, largely hollow. It was built on, uh, grants. And there was no, I really don't know what the off-ramp was. I don't know how we were going to, uh, to sustaining personnel services that were a hundred and fifteen percent of our revenue. So we had the unfortunate task last summer and again, uh, just the end of February, we said goodbye to eight firefighters. That's not an enjoyable thing to do for a fire chief. It's not enjoyable for our community. But we had to get our personnel services back under our revenue.
Eight out of how many?
Yeah, so right now we have twenty-two members remaining. Yep. Uh, so a question was, how many did, uh, eight out of how many? Those were funded on a safer grant, um, that did not renew. Uh, we were paying the salaries on those. And so we remain, the way a firefighter, uh, fire department schedule works, you have three battalions, an A shift, a B shift and a C shift. And we redistribute the remaining twenty-one members across those battalions. So seven people. As you know, uh, we have vacation and sometimes our individuals are sick or injured and it draws the numbers down. And we have a labor agreement that we adhere to and it's largely built upon safety and appropriate service to the community. With the work of the local two-five-nine-six, we're able to enter into an agreement to modify the current labor agreement to allow two people to staff an engine. So just the last two days, this station was staffed. And we'll continue to see it staffed more frequently. But I can't tell you it'll be every single day because we do have some people out with injuries. And once we became a, help, become a healthy organization and if I can get that personnel services to five point four million dollars, we're going to see this station staffed, uh, the majority of the time. But you're not being left out. There, it, it's not an easy decision. And as I mentioned earlier, like our bodies, we try and pull into the core. The annual report in front of you, thank you Shannon for building this. This is the data that we've been able to glean and I'll walk you through that front page. Fire District Five as a whole, that's throughout, uh, and raise your hand if you don't have one of these. I'll make sure staff can get one around. It'd be like asking you to order your meal without seeing the menu first. So this annual report, can you get bum one? This annual report, report serves as a report card, if you will. We're not grading ourselves, but we're trying to demonstrate the amount of work within the community. I'll present, be presenting these, uh, next couple of weeks to our city councils as well. Lower left corner speaks to the amount of training hours that our members performed in twenty-twenty-four. Thirteen hundred and seventeen hours in EMS training, twenty-eight ninety-four in fire training. And you know, there's a little bit of an expense that comes with that as well. One of the, uh, benefits of our IGA, our intergovernmental governmental agreement is, Chief Dickerson serves as our training chief and he's folded the workforce into our organization. We have platforms where we can now push remote training, uh, to Fire District Five. Just last week, we had Fire District Five out on our training grounds in White City. That didn't mean we left the communities uncovered. We just work coverage and swap a little bit. So we're adding efficiencies, uh, reducing the duplication in services. Over on the right-hand side, that's the number of calls for service, three thousand twenty-eight alarms handled by Fire District Five. That's in the entire district. Over a hundred and sixty square miles, we had three thousand calls. Average calls per day, eight point two seven of those, one thousand seven hundred and eighty were EMS. Thirty-two grass fires, twenty-seven structure fires. And the way coding goes, uh, that twenty-seven structure fires is a little misleading. That could be you burned the toast in the oven and there's smoke in the house. So the way the calls are categorized by national standard, um, that doesn't mean we had twenty-seven homes burned down. On the backside, burn permits issued, one fifty-nine. Question on burn permits, we moved to the digital age. This QR code right here, if you use your smartphone, you can get your burn permit right now. It logs into our database and it will always be live. We had seven station tours, nine hands-only CPR classes taught, hundred and five wildfire home assessments. If you haven't had one, they're free. We'll come out there and we'll give you some pointers on how to make your house more defensible. Great. More defensible against wildfire. And then forty-nine public education. Incidents by month, incidents by day a week, these are just kinda some fun graphs. You can see our risk goes up in the summer. Doesn't need data to tell us that, we live here and we experience it. Incidents by day of the week, this one's just a fun one. There's no correlation or really explanation. Um, if I show you my incidents by day of week in Fire District Three, I think Tuesday was the highest number this past year and that, we don't know why. Uh, but for the most part, uh, your Tuesday is the safest day in Fire District Five. Incidents by hour, you know, call volume really drops off nighttime and it comes up. We see a spike around ten, eleven o'clock or in the afternoons. Mutual aid is when we receive assistance from another agency or we provide assistance to another agency. That's depicted. The four thousand five hundred ninety-one unit responses, that means our units responded four thousand times. On the front, we said how many alarms we responded to, but sometimes we send two or three units to an alarm. And so it's important to show not just how many calls we had, but how many units we sent to the calls. And then in the right, that's really the bread and butter right there. Uh, Station Three ran one thousand one hundred and seventy-six calls. Station Five, one thousand four hundred and sixty-three calls. And this station here had three hundred and eighty-nine calls for service in twenty-twenty-four. My goal is not to reduce service in an area, it's to match my service with the risk and the demand. And even if we had a vehicle here twenty-four seven, it's going to be pulled to the other end of the community. And so what we've done is worked with the city of Ashland to ensure that there is some coverage. We helped cover their, their west side and they helped cover our east side. Our wildfire risk isn't that great right now, but it's going to be. And if I can save any dollars now, I can reappropriate those to the summer. And the goal is to staff this station according to the risk, seasonal risk and the demand. And if I could come right back to it, Meredith. Uh, but I wanna make, you know, just a simple clarification. This station is not closed. This station is open. We're working to recruit volunteers. It takes at least six months to get them trained up. It's really important to me that whoever steps off the engine is reliable. You can trust their performance and they're gonna do it in a safe manner. And it takes us time to train them and recruit them. And I don't want just anybody wearing our patch. We gotta make sure that we recruit good people who are community-minded and can be trusted in this community. We do have a lot of activity. When we look at this three hundred and eighty-nine calls, a lot of it is up on the pass. Right? And there's a risk with that in the summer. There's less risk with it in the winter. And a decision I have made is that we will go up to the pass when necessary, but not all of the time. If, if we have cars spun out up on the top, we probably don't want our big apparatus up in the mix as well if no one's injured. But if someone is, we'll be there. And so we're trying to right-size our response. We're working at dispatch and determining, based on the caller's information, what they tell us. If there's an injury, a spill or something that we're going to be able to interrupt or provide, uh, a remedy to, we'll go. But today, people with cell phones, and this isn't disparaging in any way, like to share what they see. And they're really quick to call nine-one-one. And a lot of the calls may not be there once we arrive. Or they just saw, uh, somebody taking a quick nap. And so we wanna make sure that we're using our limited resources in spaces where we can make the greatest difference. Meredith?
Okay, so all the calls, you go up to drag a semi off the road?
You do. You do. And that's part of what we, and that's philosophical, okay? We're going to take a look at billing for everything up there. My district, I have a lot of I-five as well. Technically, we don't have an obligation to provide response on the federal highway. But I think we'd all agree, it's the right thing to do. But we wanna do it appropriately.
And we might want some help from the state.
Uh, or the insurance carrier. Yeah. Yep. Yeah.
Many of us are retirees and are much more concerned about paramedic availability and response time. Fires are much less frequent for EMS calls.
Correct.
We live on corporate ranch roads, a lot of us here. What is the current paramedic configuration for us and how has that changed if it has given?
Yeah, so the question was, uh, paramedic configuration, I think getting to the question of, uh, how long would it take for a paramedic to get out into this area? Um, this is where I have, uh, a lot of fun. I'm an EMT, we have other people who are paramedics and I think, uh, I'd say EMTs probably, uh, do a lot of the work. But, uh, our paramedics are largely out of Ashland at Station Two. They, regardless of the service area, we have an obligation to provide fire service. As a board, we choose to provide emergency medical service as well. But Ashland Fire, they have the ambulances and they're obligated to provide the ambulance service. So you always, always. So you'll always get an ambulance out of Ashland to any call. I can't guarantee because of our staffing, and it's not the number of people we have on duty. What do we have, four paramedics? Six paramedics? So of our twenty one people, six of them are paramedics. And it's not a function of our staffing model. And so you may have no paramedics on one day. We may have three or six paramedics on one day. But you'll always have an EMT arrive at your door.
Station Two is where?
That's the one on Siskiyou. It's the first one you get to and as you're going into Ashland.
It's normal in the end, right?
Normal in the sixty six, thank you. Sixty six, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Right. Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned about your career and time involved here. Are you, is that the same model that you use everywhere else? Do you use volunteers at other stations as well?
Yeah, so the question was, do we use volunteers at other stations as well? Yes. So I'll answer it in two parts. Fire District Three is like Fire District Five. We started with volunteers and we have grown to incorporate career members. And we're still augmenting our service with volunteers. Our volunteer model at Fire District Three has shifted a little bit and we have an almost equal number of response volunteers and volunteers who help with our risk reduction efforts. So we have a couple of volunteers who come in and man phones or just help in the office. We have a couple of wonderful gentlemen who move our risk reduction trailers around. And so we have dump trailers out there. You can call, we'll bring one and our gentlemen come, pick them up and take them off. Those are things that we're eyeing for the future down in this area. The response volunteers, we augment all locations. And some of them are career minded. So you might have a volunteer who wants to get a job in the fire service and they put a little bit more time in. They also come with experience or training. And we're fortunate to have three of our employees that we laid off at the end of February staying on as volunteers. And so they will be able to infill. But remember, a volunteer needs to earn money too. And so we're really subject to their schedule. For those three that no longer work for us, they've gone off and have jobs in other locations. And so we do our best to balance. What we try and really do is if one's available, we try and get another one to join them. We need really two to provide you a service. Yeah.
Was your, is your staffing consistent over the throughout the year? Or are you working from buck staffing or are you bringing a contract through?
Yeah. So that's something that we plan. The district has raised the staffing level during the summer in the past and what we're eyeing. But it's still some conversation that we have to have with the local on what do seasonal employees look like? And how do we bring them in? The goal, and this is what we did for our Gold Hill station for Fire District Three is once conditions were becoming the worst, we staffed it until the conditions kind of waned a little bit. But we will be looking at adding staffing when it makes, when the risk is the greatest. Go ahead.
Are you the only ground out who is the whole world out?
Well, so not the only, and I want to grab that in a couple of bites if I can. So there are many stations who do not have career firefighters throughout. Largely, the, our region is kind of a donut of other populations. On the valley floor, where the population exists, we have career firefighters. As you start moving to the rural fringe, four of my locations are all volunteer. We try and staff Gold Hill, like I said, when the risk is the greatest. But all the other days, it's a volunteer location. My intent is not to turn this solely into a volunteer station. Instead, let's staff it while we can. We know that the volume is over there and when the risk increases, let's really become more focused. In the browned out term, I recognize that there used to be paid staff here. And we're going to get back to that. But we don't view it as a browned out location. It's still open. The response model is just different. Right?
I'm going to add to this, I'm going to do a little pushback with the chief.
Good.
So this is a big concern. You just hit on it. I am quite concerned, you commented earlier about people staff based on risk. This fire station, this district, the people out in this region out here, long before you and I, we even in the fire service, took it upon themselves to move in and annex and caliphile fire district. That's when the process started to start working on career professional coverage in this jurisdiction of Southland Valley. Mid seventies, that became a act and they surcharge themselves. Taxpayers voted, they surcharged themselves over eight dollars per thousand to get this thing started. You're stepping in, understand the toll issues you're dealing with. You've been given time, there's patience. The chair and I have had this conversation many times. But I think we are overlooking that history and we are overlooking what these folks have been depending on. And I strongly encourage you and the board to really think about your risk analysis. There is risk out here. And these folks, my folks, paid for this, helped start it. And they deserve to have their service. And it has also been talked about from board level. We are in this totally agree, it's a whole team. So why should one response area take the hit and the heat of what you want to call a brownout? Or a degradation of staffing? So I highly encourage that you and the board also look at a rotation basis. We're going to shut this station down for a day. When does these, when does a talent station care about that?
Yeah. Your words aren't lost. I hear you. But as we move forward, we're going to be considering and conducting ongoing analysis. The way we look at our staffing, like I said, we have twenty one. I have three battalions. I really need to add an increment of three and that's really difficult to do. And so what if we could only add one person from a year or a next person to a year? To get to my obligated leaves, we really need to build about twenty seven people into the budget. And the numbers just aren't there right now. So what will it look like if I don't have, if we had twenty two people or twenty three people? That's not divisible across three battalions and we're going to have to get a little bit creative. I understand the history and the tradition and this area truly is the roots of Fire District Five. But right now, with our staffing model and the demand, we just need to move that way. We'll continue to work towards that. You have my commitment. Bill.
Can you tell us more about your staffing model? There was an article in the other day about three persons on the E M S versus two. And can you give us that history? Three, it's like a decade, a decade, or two? And always this potentially alleged, or a number of four or less, or did we go to three?
So the question is the staffing model and appreciate Buffy Pollak being here with us from the Rogue Valley Times. Question about the number of personnel staffed. The labor agreement, let me go back to about five, six years ago. It used to be that each location was staffed with two. A subsequent labor agreement established minimum staffing levels for a type one engine of three people. When we have six and we're required to have three, we can't get anyone moved. And I really appreciate the body and their compromise. We're allowed now to staff with two. It's not the safest we'll build from it. But what it does ensure, when we have six people or more, the station will always be open. Before, we had to have nine. Yes, sir.
I know that there's some collaboration with the city.
Yeah.
What about the possibility of increasing that effort? Where things are getting lean out here, draw on the city in some kind of agreement that is, or no.
Yeah. So the question was, is there an opportunity to build stronger agreements with the city of Ashland? Right? Absolutely. And the staff continues to work towards that. Ashland is in a state of transition. Their fire chief will be retiring in two weeks. They will be looking for a new fire chief. We're not looking to be their fire chief, but it's going to provide a fresh look. Their deputy chiefs, their staff largely wants to be really more unified. And we don't have to wear the same patch, but we have the same community base. And so let's bring the agencies a little bit closer in how we train, how we respond and how we serve our communities. There's some other things. There's always conversations going on in the background. I'm active at state levels. Rep Marsh is a fan of the organization. And we're trying to build some of these. And it's too early for me to foreshadow, but we are working every angle we can to try and restore funding or staffing. We have the belief, we have the support. We just got to find the right mechanism to get the funding. Any other questions for the chief? Yeah.
Can I go back to the previous meeting, you talked about the fire district was filled with this district there? Was half of the eight million over?
Oh, yeah. On the fees.
Right? And at that time, you said it was like a seven thousand dollar a year. You know? For that one and a half million, which was not paid for one firefighter? But I was wondering if there's any ideas or actions put forward to actually deal with that one point five million? Get it out of that budget?
Yeah, so again.
My thought is many condo associations don't save enough money maintaining themselves. And what happens is what's called a special assessment. I'm sure you understand and know about it. I'm just wondering if it's a possibility that we could look at the number of houses in this district? Not personally, but housing.
Yeah.
And make a special assessment, take care of that one point five million and get that off the table.
Yeah. So question, back to Phoenix Public Safety Center. And again, grab that in bites. I'm playing catch up on that lease and like I said, the contractor, the construction still hasn't closed. We'll determine early April what the final cost of that building were. A consideration is, do we take our obligated debt to that project and move it somewhere else? So we're not part of theirs. The numbers that he provided, those were the ceiling. They weren't going to exceed one point five. Second one, Mr. Stewart, I think he left, but he posed a similar question. It would be two hundred and twelve dollars for every taxable tax lot within the district to erase a two million dollar debt. Everything with a structure on it would just be over three hundred dollars. So a one time assessment to all the patrons that if you had a structure. And I'm going to go down a rabbit trail on how our funding works. All the vacant land within our district, it's within our borders. We receive no revenue for it. As a special fire district, we only receive revenue on the structure and the first five acres that you have. And so if you have a parcel that's forty acres, the fire district receives an assessment on the structure, your home, and the first five acres. If you have three parcels, maybe your forty acres is broke up into three parcels. If two of them do not have anything on them, we do not receive any tax assessment for them. So even though we have a large swath of land we protect, we don't receive revenue on all of it. Yes.
Do we have any information about changing insurance rates based on the change of status of this station? Because when you think about it, a special assessment, a couple hundred bucks sounds like a lot of money. But if your insurance rates don't.
Yeah.
It's a, be a great way to protect yourself long run. So my thought is, do we know, do the insurance companies understand that there's a change in status of this fire station?
There isn't.
And has it changed rates?
So there is, I'm not an insurance expert. I have a lot of friends that I work with that are in the insurance business. Seven, eight years ago, there's something called the ISO rating, Insurance Service Organization rating. Insurance is largely rated based on that before. If you were a State Farm customer, they looked at your zip code. And so as we have moved, as insurance entities continue to suffer greater losses, ISO has become a lesser of an influence, which truly is to our benefit. Because I think Brian here would attest that oftentimes fire departments are compelled to invest in ways that didn't really make sense for the community, but you're trying to chase an insurance rating. And so with the ISO rating being lesser of an influence, I have not heard of any changes in this community that are not tied to anything else than they're trying to recover their losses. Insurance companies and even the reinsurers are trying to recover from all the loss. Yeah, Meredith, and then I'll just work back and forth.
So are they being determined by the amount of time it takes any property in the district to be, to get a fire track?
There's, there's multiple considerations. So a district has an ISO rating, not each individual property. And so they'd consider staffing, they consider response times, they consider the equipment on the vehicle itself. They take into consideration the dispatch center. And there's this whole scoring matrix. And Fire District Three was a three, we moved to a two, which really is a feather in the cap for us. What we found out is it really didn't impact insurance rates whatsoever. So, yeah, go ahead.
Is it just the assessment of property management structure will change now? Make it more revenueable?
Yeah. So we are constitutionally bound by a three percent increase year to year. When I said we are going to increase our budget by an anticipated five percent, that is, we just expect all of our taxes are going to go up by three percent. And then there's going to be about another two percent of additional growth. The more homes that are built, commercial occupancies, that makes up the other two percent. And I wanted to go back to your question, because I forgot to answer a piece. If we did levy a two hundred dollar assessment to each parcel, we have to take it to the voters at an election. And so it would have to be approved by all the voters. And we could do, you can do it a couple of ways, a one time assessment, one time levy. We could say twenty five cents or fifty cents for five years. Those would rebuild real quick. I'm not going to ask you for any more money until we can get this in control. Right? But those are, yeah.
Are there any impacts or considerations in the district from the new wildland?
Oh, yeah, the wildfire hazard map. This is a great topic. And I mean, I'm here to tell you, there's nothing I can do to change your rating. Fire chief has no weight in any of this. I'm hearing the same things that it will not. And we did meet with the state insurance agent and he is pledging no impacts to the insurance. I'm not going to ask you to trust me on that one, but go ahead.
I was just curious, is it in the idea of how to help alleviate the need for, how to get help for fires? Are companies, are there the wildfire, wildland firefighters company? Private companies in this area could be attached to volunteers.
Yeah.
Come and help or respond under contract of only being paid when they're responding.
Yeah.
To help eliminate any need for volunteers or the training.
Yep. So the question, and I like the creativity, is if we already have some of these services, these contract services within our community, how do we utilize them to help serve our community, right? In essence. So we, we do have a couple of our new volunteers that do work in wildland fire, in Grayback and some of the others. Also note that those companies don't stay here, they chase fire. And so even though they're a volunteer for us, they're likely. And so even though they're a volunteer for us, they're likely to go where the smoke is. To different places, right. We, we are always working with Oregon Department of Forestry. And what we try and do is establish coverage between the two agencies with the less duplication, reduce the response times. Co-location is really fun, but it doesn't necessarily make sense to have two staffed engines in the same proximity. And so we continue to look at some of those creativities. When we start looking at contracted services, that's when the local and I have really tough discussions. Because we're going to use their services first.
Are we getting coverage through ODF? Don't they still have that open space in here?
Yeah, you still receive coverage with ODF. And these are the things that are always happening in the background. For us protecting the north end, we have Sam's Valley and Aggett Lake. And we're in daily communication with ODF. And actually, this past year, all the supervisors get together on a morning call and we talk about coverage. And there's always some overlapping. I call it kind of this tidal flow. As a tide comes in and out, that's what our resources do. So if we're going to have an event that draws us into Sam's Valley, ODF pulls into Gold Hill. Vice versa, if ODF's working an incident out in Evans Creek, we move a little bit out into the Sam's Valley to provide additional coverage. Bill?
The public health case of five hundred, fifty percent of our calls are medical, three point double percent on the fire side. So they're willing to assist us. They really need something very important.
All right. I'll turn it back over to your board president.
All right, we're at an hour and a half. I know people have to leave. Is there any pending questions that you want? Or I would say, if there isn't, we'll adjourn, we'll stay around if somebody wants to have an individual question. Yes, sir?
Well, I was wondering if you could just give us a quick summary of what's going to happen to the station over the next year, let's say. Staffing wise and protective, is there a growth on the fire way? How secure are you that someone is being here?
I'll refer that to the chief. That way, it has to do with staffing.
Yeah, all right. Our staffing model, we need to get some people healthy. And once I have all my people back to work, it's going to incrementally go up. I also know that we have a couple of people who are going to celebrate the birth of a child and we want to allow them to do that. We, I anticipate hiring a few more individuals, but I'm not doing it right now. It hurts. But we're going to try and do it as we get into the summer. For the next year, we're going to continue to build a balanced budget that equally addresses our debt. We, we got to start paying our debt down and then we're going to put it towards people. What I don't want to happen is that we start becoming so frugal that we're deferring maintenance on facilities and apparatus. We just caught an apparatus that had a tie rod that was about ready to come apart. That's not safe for anyone. So we got to really balance this. And so we will continue to invest in our people and staff.
I'm going to put the chief on the spot here because I don't want to let anybody leave here with any type of faults, you know, because we have difficult decisions coming up. Can you talk about a little bit about what's could happen prior to July first? If we don't make some type of decisions with money, are we going to run out of money before the fiscal year?
It all comes down to right here. This is what we have in debt. This is what we have in the bank. And you heard me mention, we might get four hundred thousand dollars more in tax revenue. If I'm directed to pay our debt, we only have about seven hundred thousand dollars and that'll get us through two months. We, we'll run out of money in May.
Yes, well, I'm afraid we'll stretch this down to two hundred dollars. For a household, five thousand.
Yeah, so.
Maybe does he actually push us forward into not waiting longer and longer and longer to try to figure out how to solve these problems?
Yeah, we'd have to get that on a ballot and an election and it would take place in November.
How about just a general fundraiser?
But we haven't lost sight on that. Yeah, absolutely. We, part of this is going through and right sizing, not just our personnel, but right sizing our fleet. And we have gone through and asked ourselves, what is non-essential? And we have surplus some vehicles that, I can't even say were good ideas, but we have them anyways. We've sold them. We've sold a surplus engine. We have a ladder truck that the district, it's a reserve ladder truck. We put it up for auction. I don't feel it brought a fair value and so we're going to attempt to sell it again. We have a little bit of money. We brought in about forty-five thousand dollars from our fire sale of surplus apparatus and we'll continue to try and sell that ladder truck. It may bring twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
That's what we paid for it, right?
I, I'm not sure what you paid for it though.
The perspective of the room in August, in this room, will be different than it is right now.
Yeah.
With the sixty and I've actually heard eighty-five percent of the calls from medical later. So whatever that actual number of responses. Just for clarity, within the, without Paulstein and Old Ninety-Nine and the Ford Grease Break, so the IM, are the response that are medically oriented always typically coming from Aspen Park?
I couldn't answer that right now. I couldn't tell you what the percentage of responses were. Of your calls, I don't have this number, but I'll bring it to the next board member. The majority of that three hundred and eighty-nine is I-5. It's not your community.
So a lot of that would come from Ashland City.
Again, that's that, that's that contribution you are making as a community to I-5.
That's a comfort to our remote communities that in fact, the lack of staffing on that time here is not causing extended medical response.
That is, I would feel comfortable saying that's accurate. Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
You're mentioning I-5 and I've heard you have a setup prior to the end. You know, the state doesn't have any money, but you're the one collecting the taxes, going to pay the taxes. How about people about trying to get some help with them for all the responses to medical calls, et cetera?
Yeah, that's where, even for ODOT, they bill the motor carrier. And right now, there isn't a good mechanism to bill, but we want to bill. And it starts with a board resolution. We have to establish fair rates and they're tied to a different plan. And then get motor carriers to reimburse for our response up there. Because I think this week we've had two, I think, up on, on the pass. Something? No.
All right, I'll, does anybody have any other questions for the chief before we conclude this meeting? So I hope we gave you enough answers. I know it's still unclear. We're going to be part of this. For the board. There's, I think, three or four, three, three, I don't mind, my position's up. There's four openings for the Fire District Five board. If you feel like you want to get involved, you go to the election site, Chris Walker, and you go there and you put in your, your application fee and get your name on the ballot. It would be awesome to see people that are interested in being part of this process. It's a big learning curve. You would get a lot of information about how to fix this problem and it would be good to serve your community. So, yes, Bill?
Deadline is Thursday.
Yes.
Four moving positions, but only one has done the foreplay.
Yes, good job. Yes. So I would, I would just conclude with this. We're going to stay around for twenty minutes. One thing we didn't really talk about was the work Fire District Three's done and Chief Hussey. We've completely reorganized Fire District Five to save money. The IGA is saving us probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. The union people have taken to motions and rank. We've gotten, we really restructured the fire department to better serve you. And I would just welcome, stay around, talk to us individually, come to board meetings. And I'll pass off the mic to the chief and he can conclude this meeting. So thank you.